I was like.
Well, I seen one the other night on the work on three fifty-two. You've seen that current, you know, like you go into the city, city, city landing. It's in a little period. That person would be driving to. When no seat. Them, I could call. Uh, the car, the door, my car, the car landed on her. And I told God, I said, Lord, if that happened the way they say it happened, Lord, I feel that she was dead before the car landed. And he, he's, he's in, uh, he's on license plate. And I, I think she was, I think, uh, she was pregnant. Well, you know, we, we think that's a bad thing, but you know, God has a way how he gonna do that. That's, that's right. I really think she was driving too, just driving too fast. We have one in the state.
Are y'all ready? Come to order. I've got, I've got six o'clock. Let's come to order, brother Bradley, please.
Would you pray with me, Lord? Uh, well, just thank you for the day you've given us for beautiful weather. God just guide us tonight. Help us to always look to you. Before we make any decision affecting our city. Thank you for everyone that has a part in our city. Just continue to guide us. Uh, watch over us. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the midst of poverty and justice for all.
Ms. Barbara, please.
Baker.
Here.
Bradley.
Here.
Edens. King.
Here.
Riceinger.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Uh, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Second. Ms. Barbara.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Barbara.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yeah.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
And council, we didn't, we still don't have some, the data that we were needing from the state for the unfinished business from last Thursday, but as soon as we have that, we'll, we'll get that to you. So. Under new business six A is the police department to allocate fifty thousand for construction of a range. Chief, do you wanna? Make sure that power's on the thing.
Jeff Ross, police department. Uh, we're looking at finishing up the range out there, which is all consisted of the range building. We did some kind of rough estimates, got a couple estimates a couple months ago, which I'm sure they went up a little bit. On metal buildings and concrete, there's concrete and the concrete finishers under city did anyway. So my thing was to get out some building, which I'm sure we're on going thirty-five thousand, just a little bit. I don't think we want to even get fifty thousand, but we're lucky to just have that budget so we can each build this out and have it. The pad laid and then the building coming in set. So when they do give you a bid, we can accept it and give it a bill at the price of new board.
Chief, is that in your budget?
Uh, working out in my budget.
Is that what we approved before on the?
Sir.
Is that what we approved before on the?
On the range actually came out of the police, police department maintenance, yes.
Are you going to have to fence that?
It's not fenced now. It's pretty well either corridored off by the quarry wall or it's got the trees and it's got the road that builds in about an acre of a mile.
Well, are you gonna have to fence it to keep people out?
So far, we haven't had any issues out there. So, um, e- even if we did put up a fence, I don't think it's gonna keep anybody out from that area if we had to. Cause I mean, we'd be looking at a barbed wire fence. It would be most economical. And I don't think that's gonna keep many people out. Which we don't leave nothing out there of value. Right now, we've got an old car that we've been missing to train out of. And the building, which we restore our tarses and stuff like that in, just so we don't carry them back and forth. And maybe hold some classes and stuff.
Well, I, I was just thinking maybe putting, putting a fence up to keep, keep people from driving up there and vandalizing.
No, we have gates and stuff up.
You have gate?
Yes, that's the only way they can have any, and it's gate at all. Yes.
Yeah, from the, from the north, it's, it's a long ways. Right?
Yes.
And then they can, other than coming through the stone quarry, there's, yeah. Uh, I, I don't, my memory's kind of vague, but I thought at some, when this came up last year, we talked about. We did one project out of police maintenance and when we were ready to do this one, we're gonna do it out of general fund reserve. I don't know that that's hundred percent accurate, but I think that's the route we were gonna choose.
I don't remember that. Just saying.
Well, we, we had talked about if, if it runs over, then we would look at it.
Your balance in police maintenance, four hundred and thirteen thousand, five fifty-nine.
He's covered.
And there will be an additional, I mean, play everything out of the table, the forty thousand's coming back from school on the college. So.
Just, just make sure you don't get over a bid.
Yes.
Well, I would still like to see it come out of the general fund reserve. Cause in my opinion, if they're building a building, you're manufacturing, you're not maintenance. You, you'll have, he'll have maintenance in the future.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I would, I would like to see it come out of the general fund reserve for a building.
So what's the motion?
I make the motion that, uh, we set the budget not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to come out of the general fund reserve.
Is there a second? Barbara, how much is in there?
In the general fund.
Six hundred and thirty-five thousand.
What would the auditor, um, say about that coming out of maintenance?
Of police maintenance? Those funds can only be used for police and that's for police.
But it wouldn't be a problem for like a building, the building instead of maintaining one?
No.
That, that's.
I mean, the police, the police facilities up there, they use the police maintenance funds to.
So where we, we have a motion, wait a second. We have, we have new motion.
I'd like to know that this came out of police maintenance.
Motion is to approve the fifty thousand from police maintenance and second, Eddie, you got the second? Ms. Barbara.
King.
Yes.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Um, Ms. Barbara, are you ready? Could you read that ordinance, please?
Whereas the city of Clarksville, let me start. Ordinance approving a special permit request for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas. Whereas the city of Clarksville has heretofore adopted a zoning ordinance, an official zoning map to guide and influence the allocation and arrangement of land uses. The development of land and the future building within the corporate limits of the city of Clarksville. Whereas a petition has filed in accordance with provisions of said ordinance requesting a special permit for Cogan Family LLC in a I-one zone for certain lands within the corporate limits of the city of Clarksville. Whereas a public hearing was held on said petition on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Planning commission approved the special permit request on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and recommended its approval to the Clarksville City Council on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clarksville, Arkansas, section one, a special permit in a I-one zone for Cogan Family LLC shall be granted. You, use, used as a record service for the following described property, see exhibit A. All of said property being located between two O one B Porter Industrial Road, Clarksville, Arkansas, section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith or hereby repealed.
Good. Hunter, do you wanna come up? Just against my questions from the council. Got Hunter, what, what connects with us? He's the owner proprietor of that business and he's here to answer any of your questions that you may have. And part of it was that, Hunter, I'm gonna apologize to you. We, this was, the reason this is dated the fifteenth and fifteenth was because we tried to have that planning zoning meeting some time ago and we couldn't get a quorum. And so we requested for them to do that today ahead of this so we could get you, get you to work. That was intent. So I apologize about that first meeting.
All I can say, we, we need some more. It, it's never, it's enough work to go around for, for everybody.
Well, I wouldn't speak for the chief, but I, I bet you that the police officer is standing on solid road waiting on the tow truck.
Yeah.
Glad to have more in town.
I don't have any questions.
I've got a couple of questions. All right. You gonna have a fence stand law?
Yes, sir. Um, so what we're looking at right now is we're just trying to get approvals to use the property. We've got these state guidelines which requires a six-foot fence all the way around and for it to be secured and lit properly. The state has just recently put out guidelines and we plan to match all of their guidelines for that.
And you understand that since it's in the city, the chief, it's a responsibility of the chief of police to inspect all that.
Yes, sir.
Not state police.
Correct.
State police has to inspect it for their use, but you, you. See, you have to inspect. To be on that rotation.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Any other? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules in place on the second reading?
Shall move.
She catch that, Barbara?
Yeah. Bryceinger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yeah.
Ordinance approving a special permit request for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
We'll open it for discussion or comments one more time. Seeing none, motion to suspend the rules in place on its third reading.
Shall move.
Second?
Yes.
Ms. Barbara.
Thompson.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Bryceinger.
Yes.
My title, please.
Ordinance approving a special permit request for the city of Clarksville, Arkansas.
We'll open for discussion one final time. Seeing none, motion to adopt the ordinance.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Barbara.
Baker.
Yes.
Bradley.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Riceinger.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Hunter, I'd said it already. I'll say it again. Get to work. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Do you have one or two records?
Currently have the one. We're purchasing a second.
Uh, CCU. Bethany.
And the radios for the eclipse. Um, Zach Franklin of the GIS departments began working with the broadband and equity, equity access and deployment map.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Morgan, you might get with Jason while he's here, just, uh, on, on Montgomery Street. Uh, Stephen, uh, is at his son's baseball game, but he did leave a report for y'all. Everybody get a copy of that?
Yes.
So very exciting times for the city. We're just on, right on the cusp, cusp of so much good stuff that's going on. So. Abby? You got Hannah with you?
I did.
You brought your backup.
I have a lengthy report, but I'm only gonna take the highlights. A lot of it is eclipse stuff. Um, still gonna talk about two shirts y'all thought I was done talking about, but I still have them, so I'm still gonna talk about them. And we still have our Johnson County Eclipse shirt at the chamber. They're now ten dollars instead of fifteen, but Bethany said that we survived the eclipse. We have an I Survive in Johnson County Eclipse T-shirt. And those are twenty dollars at the chamber as well. And you can also take those up with master printing. Um, please come by. Um, just to hit some high points about the eclipse, uh, we did a live with Levy concert. I'm sure you're gonna have to talk about it a little bit. Um, on the fifth, on the sixth, we did our moonwalk fun run and we had about twenty-five participants in the race, get vendors set up. Um, and it was a good time there. Uh, we gave out trophies for first, second, third, and then last place also, cause it was a fun run, of course. Um, on the eighth, we did moonwalk on the block and I'm sure everyone else can say this too. We had no idea what to expect with this event. Um, so we heard like, you know, this means people are gonna show up or this means people are gonna show up. We set up at the courthouse at like eight o'clock in the morning and there were already people setting up to pick out their spots for today. And thank goodness my vendors were already set up because they were picking up, like had picnic blankets and chairs and stuff and it was really cool. People were buying shirts at nine o'clock in the morning and we already were supposed to start till eleven. And we had live music at the levy and so we were sending people that way. A lot of people just landed at the courthouse. It was at the main hub, but I think they just approached us and ended up there. Um, and we were pushing people that way. There was people along the levy wall. We had people from Idaho, Colorado, Florida, Germany, uh, Washington, everywhere.
Liverpool, England. Liverpool, England.
Yeah, there was from everywhere. Cause I was putting in card and milk and I said, what's your zip code? He said, I'm from Germany. I said. But a lot of people had no idea. We just, so this was a really big deal. Like they saw us on prime news, which they did great coverage.
Yeah, that was amazing.
They did fantastic job. Um, and worked really well for that. And where they saw in our website, um, where they saw the billboard, so all the things that we were doing like really worked and they were able to come to our community. Um, they aided our restaurants, they aided our hotels. So that was really big for us. Um, also wanna shout out one more time, um, the marketing club at the U of O. They did a fantastic job of helping this marketing eclipse. Really couldn't have done it without them. They were out, all the city's events, all the chambers events, they were out taking pictures, fucking videos and posting it. Um, they had me involved in all of their planning. They created QR codes and they set them up at Diamond Drip, I think Daddy Smashing Wings. We had them at our events and so they encouraged people to scan the QR code and enter those codes. A lot of the information for you guys next time will wherever one came from. Any questions?
No, just listen, I wanna, I wanna thank you and Ray and your patrol crew down there, just to see what downtown Clarksville look like. It was, it was such a paradigm shift from where we were, you know, eight, eight, nine years ago. You guys are doing just a wonderful job for the city and we're very, very appreciative of you.
What's real cool about that is that a lot of people that we talked to, well, this is a beautiful area. We're gonna come back. We passed out a lot of stuff on waterfall, five trails.
Yeah.
And we just, I mean, we had a lot of contact with people. So I think it's gonna, it'll be progress.
Well, just keep hammering away, cause I can tell you that the conversation that Stephen is having, all of that is relevant. That's what got there and those folks looking at Clarksville to begin with is that quality of life kind of things and having a university and having a good hospital. All of those things that I was told that, you know, in practice is what you do. I've seen it actually play out in reality. So it wouldn't be possible without the, the partnership with the chamber. So we're, we're very proud of y'all so much.
See all of your smiling faces. So I thought I'd stop in and say hello. Um, biggest thing I wanna mention, I can answer any questions about anything you have on my report. The thing I wanted to highlight is our farmer's market. Um, registration is still open. We are having a meeting at noon this Thursday and at five P M. This Friday. Just beginning of season meeting, answering any questions, talking to our veteran vendors, new vendors, everybody like that. Um, so just letting everybody know that registration is still open. We look forward to an opening day festival. Like last year on, uh, April twenty-seventh, not October, April twenty-seventh, uh, being able to have all kinds of activities, live music and things like that for everybody. Um, to bring also whenever you say quality of life and showing people what we have to offer in Clarksville and Johnson County. Uh, we are partnering with J R M C to host another U A M S community visit. Um, we've set that date in September, so we're excited to be able to show our community to them, try to get new doctors to our community. Um, and really show them what we're made of and what we have to offer people. So.
Maybe we need to bring back, uh, trout fishing in America. We did that doctor tour up there. Every one of those kids mentioned that.
Yep. I plan to have another, uh, concert that weekend also. So we'll have a pack full of events for them. But. Do you have any questions?
And you've got some, some mural ideas ready to email us all and?
Yes. So that is actually something that I will have more updates for you at the next council meeting because we're finalizing a lot of stuff this month. Um, so I'll be able to give a full report on that next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Chief.
Sorry, comp time wasn't as bad as we planned on it. We actually got to send some guys home early. Never happy, didn't have to work seven days straight. Um, for the month of March, we had two hundred and seven offense violations. Uh, they wrote two hundred and forty-eight tickets, hundred and one, or no. Yeah, two hundred and forty-eight tickets, hundred and one warnings. Um, incident reports took a hundred and fifty-eight. And dispatch gave out nine hundred and ninety-two calls for the police department. Other than that.
That's not bad considering all the traffic and stuff we.
So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Brian, do you wanna speak for the airport tonight or? You don't have to. Hey, wait a minute. Is Cody's, is Cody's report in your packets? Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
No, it's okay.
A little internal.
The airport didn't, we didn't do a lot of pre-planning. We, we moved some airplanes out of the way. We had about, I think we had eighteen transients. Coming for the eclipse. Uh, had two from Oregon, one from Arizona, quite a few from, uh, Missouri. And as I think most of you know, we had an airplane accident that afternoon. Uh. Nothing, no serious injuries, couple broken ribs and a few cuts and bruises. One guy lost some teeth. Um, but airplane, multi-engine aircraft, uh, engine quit on takeoff. And he put it, put it in the tree. So not a good deal, but everybody got out of there. So.
Yeah, it could have been much worse.
Could have been much worse. Uh, on a good note, they had five hundred and seventy skydives over the three days.
Five hundred and seventy?
Five hundred and seventy. And that, some of those are tandem. So some of those are two people. They had, uh. A few physically challenged skydivers, one guy in a wheelchair, got him up tandem. They broke a record in the state for the most women that linked up in the air of six.
Oh, wow. That's cool.
Uh, the U S, U S parachute association president came by. Uh, and if there's gonna be a big ride up in one of the parachute magazines, I'll get you guys a copy of that when it comes out. We sold about nine hundred gallons of jet fuel.
That's always good.
That's always good. Yeah, about a thousand dollars worth of profit right there. Uh, they had fourteen jumpers during the eclipse that, and.
During totality?
During totality. They had, they took their plane up full about ten minutes before the eclipse. They were circling. As soon as it got total, they, they jumped out. So.
Janice, is that where y'all got the picture on the front page of the graphic? That was a really cool picture. Somebody had, huh? Okay. That's a good picture.
But the, over the three days, I, I watched them a couple of days off and on and they, it was very windy. They had to shut down part of Sunday because of the wind, but they scattered people. North of the airport, all over the place, but, uh, no, apparently no injuries. Everything went off just fine. So. Uh, other than that, AWAS is still going. Uh, it'll be probably late winter, spring before they get it installed, but. That's about it.
It's a game changer.
Yep, it is.
And we're working on the R P Z.
Yep.
Think we got a pathway forward to kinda get some of that solved this year. So it might be a big year for the airport.
Yep, I hope so. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Chief.
Chief Weaver, Clarksville Fire. Uh, you guys have our report for the month. Uh, beyond that, we just are taking kind of a time to take, get our, catch our breath after getting all the preparations for the eclipse. Luckily, uh, the guys didn't have anything that overtaxed them, um, handled the weekend great. And, uh, just wanna give them accolades for all their efforts.
I would just highlight, Jason, while, while you're here is that they're not only firefighters, but when the ambulances are tasked and they're not available, they're also. First responders and lifesavers, right? So. For a volunteer fire department, I'm gonna keep echoing this and telling them out of this chair. What you guys and girls do is amazing. It's just, I don't, it's hard to articulate. The things that you do from, from traffic control to saving the Harps building, to saving someone's life that, that, that ambulance couldn't get to. It's amazing and I'm very proud of y'all.
Appreciate it. We're on, uh, record track again to break. Last year was a record year as call volume wise.
Yeah.
Um, by nearly a hundred calls and we're, we're on track to break it again. So. So we kinda pride ourselves that we're a volunteer department and we're able to handle it and answer the call.
Just let them know we're very proud of them and we're gonna keep doing everything we can to support them.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Morgan, do you wanna talk since Stanley's not here? Some of the projects, maybe an update on, uh, uh, M P B and Montgomery. Probably start, probably start with, um, Montgomery.
Montgomery.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started, um, last weekend and has been moving along rapidly. Currently, they, um, are working on the west side and they'll be installing the curb and sidewalk and getting the west side almost completely built before they move over to the east side. They, uh, if you're, anyone's wondering about the asphalt that was placed, that was initial leveling asphalt to bring the road up to sections where it'd be a smoother ride. Instead of just the unevenness. Uh, so. Once the curb is in place on both sides, they'll come back and put the final surface course of asphalt on. Probably looking at. End of next week, they'll start curb. So the project's moving, moving along rapidly. Uh. I still, you know, it's, it was scheduled to be completed prior to August fifteenth. Before school, I think it's gonna be finished probably a lot sooner than that, cause they're really moving along.
Yeah, he said he wants to get out there.
Yeah. The, uh, Marvin Vincent, uh, expansion is almost in the dry. Once they get it in the dry and get the H V A C installed, a lot of the work will slow down because they'll take the wood flooring and place it in there and let it get acclimated before they place the flooring. If, uh, anyone wants to go by and look, uh, you can let me or the mayor know and we can get you with the Van Horn representative and let you look around on the site. It's a, you walk in there right now, it's pretty impressive. The building looks really huge and as you go through construction. It goes from looking small to looking big to looking small and then it looks about right when you get really close to being done. Uh, the slab. You know, you walked out there on a slab, it was like, oh, this looks kinda small, but now that they've got the building up.
Yeah.
It looks huge. Uh, so. And then, uh, also you can kinda see the entire vision of what it looks like of the new entrance. Because it's framed up and getting close to where you can see what it's gonna look like as you come up to the building. Any other project? Well, I guess that's really kinda it as far as the major projects.
We, so we're starting on the, but my, I need to be with the, uh, baseball committee.
Oh. Yes, we got, uh, revised drawings today.
Yeah.
And I finished the grading and Stanley will be ready to start doing the, or the city will be ready to start doing the grading work on the field, actual property soon.
So we need to try to meet with them one day this week.
Are we on track, uh, with the Marvin as far as time wise?
Yes, sir.
And he said he wants to be out here by July, right?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be a lot of stuff coming together this summer. On, on the cook projects that are currently, uh, in place.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Sir. Under Parks and Rec and M P B, I was, he's kinda hit the highlights, but I would say that. We met with, uh, the directors of all the leagues and even added a new league and I think we've gained a lot of traction. Using our facilities for both developmental and competitive type leagues. And so very proud of that, that, uh, agreement with those groups. And that thing's moving forward with haste. So I think the summer is gonna look really, really busy around our parks. Uh, if you haven't been out to the lake, uh, seen the new swimming area on the north side of the lake, I would encourage you to go take a look at that. And regardless of what you see on Facebook, no, we did not go to coast to coast carport and get their scraps to put on that new building. That was a design by an architect and it, I think it looks great. So. Just, uh, just for the record. What about A and P? We've got a meeting, uh, the. And just so, just for a public announcement, A and P meets once a quarter now, right? So if you have an event or something that needs to be funded beyond, you know, in the next quarter, you need to probably come to that meeting and get it on the radar. Because they won't meet again for another three months. they won't meet again for another three months.
In other words, don't wait for the last minute.
Yeah. Ms. Barbara?
You have the treasurer's report in the box and I want to commend Jennifer. She has got her certified Arkansas municipal clerk status.
Hey, congratulations. Thank. Motion.
Can I add one thing to what you said earlier about all the, sorry about that, just the potential developments and the thing, the discussions that the mayor's been having. One of the things he left out is there, most of them have been interested in the trails, the bike trails, the walking trails and all that stuff. And all the work that the mayor and y'all have approved has gone a long ways with a lot of those people that are coming into town. Um, I know that kind of gets overlooked, but we've taken a lot of people and shown them around that kind of stuff. That's one of the first questions in addition to the, you know, economics.
One of their, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but one of the interviews that Channel 5 had with someone that had came here and I don't remember where they came from, but they, they mentioned the bike trails. They said the bike trails were just a plus. And, uh, you know, the, they came for the eclipse, but the bike trails were just a plus. So there's people coming here that they're finding things that we have, uh, that I think will bring them back.
I was up there that morning and there was the, like the Mercedes printer vans and other vans just loaded down all over the trails up there, parked all over the place. Every one of the parking spots and even the beach, not all of them, most of those spot, pull-off spots were full and they all had bikes. So they were doing double duty with the eclipse and the mountain bike trails. But the, the people looking at investing in Clarksville, in addition to the people just coming to ride the trails, they're interested in recreational aspect, especially because of our location in Northwest Arkansas also.
You know, I would say to the, to the public, um, in closing is that, um, the world is, world is a little less dimmer place today because we lost Bob Hurley. And so he, uh, he leaves us with a big hole to fill in this community. And for me personally, he was a constant source of knowledge and wisdom. And, um, he always told me, you do things because it's right for people, not for a certain group of people. But that's the thing that, um, resound, resided with me more than anything. Our decisions are based on what benefits the whole, not a group. And I'm going to miss him dearly, but I think he would be proud to see what this council and previous councils have done with the city and to see what's going to happen in the near future for the folks that lost their jobs at Haynes and, um, at Monroe Shoes. Uh, help is on the way. Um, within just a few short weeks, we're going to start filling some of those gaps for you. And I said this once before and I'm going to keep saying it, every day we could get up and come to work, that's our number one goal. Even though we talk about all the fun stuff, it's all about getting jobs here. And there's not a day goes by that I don't wake up and remember that Haynes closed and there's several families that don't have a job here. Monroe closed, there's north of 50 people that don't have a job here and I worry about them every day. So in everything I do, that's my goal, to fill that gap. So. Motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
We are adjourned. Thank you, council.